Be looking for a motion to approve today's agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Duckham, supported by Williams. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, passes unanimously, takes us to item three A, public comment. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? Last opportunity for public comment. Seeing none, public comment is closed, takes us to item four A, committee item minutes. Be looking for a motion to approve last month's meeting minutes. Moved by Williams.
Support.
Supported by Walls. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, passes unanimously, takes us to item B, appointments. First one we'll take are the nine one one advisory board seats. There's two that are up for appointment. The first is the township fire chief or designee, Tim Mackel Downey, is a current member. He is the applicant. I'd be looking for a motion to reappoint Mr. Mackel Downey. Moved by Walls. Is there any others? If none, all in favor of recommending Mr. Mackel Downey, say aye. All opposed, Mr. Mackel Downey will be the committee recommendation. The second is the township police chief or designee. Scott Grahusky is the current member. There is a new applicant and he did not reapply. Darren McIntosh is the applicant. Be moved by Walls, is there any other? Suggestions? If not, all in favor of Mr. McIntosh, say aye. All opposed, Mr. McIntosh will be the committee recommendation. The next is the community corrections advisory council. The first seat is a county prosecutor. And as we know, Mr. Jarzinka has retired and we have a new prosecutor, that's Kelsey Gurnsey, who is the applicant. I would nominate Kelsey Gurnsey. All in favor of? Kelsey, please say aye. All opposed, Prosecutor Gurnsey will be the? Recommendation. The next is a proxy designee, we do not have a current member. Nathan Hall has applied for that position. Moved by Williams, is there any other suggestions? Seeing none, all in favor of Mr. Hall, say aye. All opposed, Nathan Hall will be the committee recommendation. The next is the probate court judge position. Current member is Diane Rappley. Jennifer Kelly, a newly elected judge, is the applicant. I would put forth Ms. Kelly. Is there any other nominations? Seeing none, all in favor of Ms. Kelly, say aye. All opposed, Jennifer Kelly will be the committee recommendation. The next is a proxy designee. There is no current member. Lisa Hendricks is the applicant. Moved by Williams, any other nominations? Hearing none, all in favor of Lisa Hendricks, say aye. All opposed. Ms. Hendricks will be the committee recommendation. The next is the city chief of police. That was Elmer Hitt and we have our outgoing undersheriff, Mr. Simpson, who will be the new city police chief and he is the applicant. Moved by Williams, all in favor of Police Chief Simpson, say aye. All opposed, Mr. Simpson will be? The recommendation. Congratulations, sir. And the proxy designee, there's no current member, Sergio Garcia is the applicant. Moved by Williams, any other nominations? Hearing none, all in favor of Mr. Garcia, say aye. All opposed, Mr. Garcia will be the committee recommendation. That is it for appointments, I believe. And it takes us to item C, the sheriff summit township contract renewal. And Sheriff Shutey is here today, good morning, sir.
Morning. I sat way back there today, it's kind of throwing me off a little bit, my apologies. So this is the summit township contract. I trust you've had an opportunity to review it. There's been just a couple of changes in there to compensate for additional pay increases. And the language was gone through by our attorneys. Do you have any questions?
Committee members, are there any questions? Okay, Commissioner Duckham.
Morning Sheriff.
Good morning.
On the changes to the summit contracts, how much? You said compensate, pay compensation increases?
Yes.
For the contract, what were they, I mean percentage wise?
It would be whatever you guys decide upon for the pay increases for?
Oh, okay.
The police officer, excuse me, our deputies. So it was, it was kind of put in there, a little bit generic language, so that, you know, before it had always been like three percent. And anticipating that that could be higher, could be lower, whatever the case may be. So they would reap the benefits if it's lower. And if not, if it was higher, then they would pay for it as well.
I thought maybe you'd plugged a number in there. I was curious as what it would be.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Walls.
Yes ma'am, they have.
Any other questions from committee members? If none, I'd be looking for a motion to forward to the full board with recommendation of approval.
Support.
Moved by Bear, supported by Duckham. Any discussion? If you could please post the vote.
It's my posting. Passes unanimous.
Thank you. That takes us to item D, the sheriff two thousand twenty-four year end report.
Thank you. It's a little strange because I don't have control over this. Could you skip to the next slide, please? So as you can see, we've, we've continued our community involvement. With participation in the drug and violence summits. We also, I want to emphasize this a little bit, we, we have a team member, which is Captain Stewart, is involved with adult treatment court. He attends adult treatment court and is there, available for adult treatment court at every, every day, it's, it's once a month that they have it. It's been extremely beneficial for both us and the court to be able to take care of people who are violating those terms and deal with it appropriately. As you can see, we added on seven road patrol deputies and three corrections deputies and two casual deputies were hired. That's in our, our court security, if you recall, approving that a couple of years ago. We had a couple that left and we had a couple that were wanting to do it, so it was a perfect match for us. Six of those seven people that we hired last year, we put through the police academy ourselves. And of course, the outdoor shooting range. I'm, I'm happy to, to report that it's coming along very well. And there's some additional work that's going to be done in the spring. But we have been using it already for qualifications and it's worked out just fantastic. Next slide, please. Can see our, our commissary fund is doing well. There has been some legislation and some? Other things that have, have taken place. I say other things because it's kind of through the FCC that causes us to be a little bit concerned about this because they want to stop our ability to be able to generate this money through? Snack bag and soft drink sales. So, so keep it tuned on that and make sure that you're aware of it. We use e gloves now, so if you're not familiar with what an e glove is, it's like a taser that you wear on your glove. So if a person is acting in a, in a difficult manner inside of the jail, instead of trying to pull them and manhandle them, this glove will give them a poke and, and they work fantastic and, and we're able to get control and do what we need to do to handle the situation. Of course, we have the CERT team, which is our cell extraction response team. Huge for us, we've used it in the court too. We've had a couple of high profile murder cases here recently where the defendant was a difficult person and the CERT team was able to assist and it went out wonderfully. Next slide, please. Whoops. As you can see, still on social media, over twenty-five thousand followers. Our stride team has done just wonderful for us and you can see that's a photograph of all of our stride team members, they're all volunteers. And they've put together all of these things that you see on here. Then there's, there's a slew of other little things that they do behind the scenes as well, but the sheriff's open house is probably the biggest one. The candlelight vigil is huge. Twenty-eight car seats last year we gave away and that's them actually recruiting people to give money to the car seat fund and then going out and providing it to needy families. Typically, that occurs at the hospital after a, a, a young lady has had her, her child and then isn't able to take the child home safely. We purchase them a car seat, we deliver it to them and they're able to take it home. And of course, the stuff, the cop car event, I know a couple of you were there. Next slide, please.
Commissioner Duckham has a?
Oh, I'm sorry.
These e gloves, they look interesting. Does every officer get them or just the jail guards or?
Just inside the jail and it's not everyone inside the jail, it's just a select few inside the jail in the event that they're needed. So they don't wear them constantly, they just weren't, they put them on if they, if they need to interact with somebody who's?
How much they cost? Any idea?
Right around a thousand? Four thousand? Excuse me, four thousand, four thousand dollars.
Per, per pair?
Each pair, four thousand dollars.
Be nice to have at home for kids, wouldn't it?
No comments, sir. We, we also have a? I don't know if you're aware of this, but legislation was passed that we can't have any handcuffs, any kind of restraint on a defendant inside the courtroom at all. And we have to take extra precautions to make sure that the jury does not see them in any type of restraint whatsoever, so as we don't unduly influence them. So we were able to purchase a cuff, if you will, that goes over the ankle of the defendant and is covered up by their pants and that's electronic as well. And it is one heck of a zip. It's, it's controlled by a remote control and if they were to get out of line or they try to make a run for it, you can push that and it gives them a, a charge as well. We ended up doing that about the same time we got the e gloves, it was kind of a package deal, that's probably why it was so much money. So that's the other reason why the CERT team has been going down to the courthouse as well. Sorry, I didn't mean to, I don't know, for whatever reason, I'm, I'm cantered this way, I didn't mean to put my back to you guys. As you can see, calls for service roughly the same, twenty-six thousand last year. And then the citations issued, the miles driven, all relatively the same. I do believe our citations are up. Our use of force is pretty good, twenty-five. You can see how many traffic accidents that we policed last year. And our FOIA requests are huge, nineteen hundred and forty-eight, and I just had two ladies doing that. The reason why that's such a big deal is because a lot of that is also video requested and we're required to go in, blur faces and do all sorts of different things. So they're going through the entire call as the police officers handling it and it's quite a time consuming event. Handguns and purchase permits are relatively the same. Fingerprints is a big deal for us this year. We're thinking of implementing a system where we can do it by appointment, a little bit easier for us to, to manage it that way. We don't have people sitting in the lobby waiting and I think it'll help streamline things a little bit better to make it easier for us also to handle the FOIA requests as well, because these are all handled by the same folks. Next slide, please. So our major incidents, we had three homicides last year. McDivitt, the female victim was shot and killed by her boyfriend. He's still in our jail on felony murder charges. And then tragic incident in Summit Township as well. Husband killed his wife and then fatally shot himself, committing suicide. And then just before the end of the year, we had the hit and run, not necessarily a homicide, but for purposes of what we're talking about, it certainly fits the bill. Where a lady was struck, excuse me, a man was struck by an unknown vehicle at this point. We do have some intelligence leads that we're facing and trying to follow up on. Fatal accidents, we had seven, I think we're down a little bit this year, thankfully. Only four pursuits this year. And you can see the, the JANE accomplishments this year. If you have any questions on that, I'm happy to answer them. Next slide, please. So one of the things that we began last year in cooperation with the state police internet crimes against children task force and in cooperation with JANE as well, is working on planned stings for people that are involved in prostitution of young girls. It also assists us in examining and investigating human trafficking in our area. It's been very successful. We had seven arrests as of last year and we anticipate that to continue to grow. We do it intermittently, all times of day, all times of night, and we also do it on any day of the week. So it has been a, a huge intelligence gathering operation for us and it's been successful in criminal prosecutions as well. And of course, this incident, I've talked with you about the circumstance with the, the mobile active shooter, which we did a press release on with Jackson PD and Lenawee County, including the Michigan State Police who ended up doing the investigation onto that. Everybody who was involved in this has been cleared through, excuse me, their internal investigations as well as criminal investigations. And it still remains under investigation just for determinations of who shot when and all of those kinds of things. But there's no criminal wrongdoing done by the officers and deputies involved in it. Next slide, please. Oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Bear.
With this, with this incident, November sixth. Was there only one person in the vehicle?
Yes, only one person in the vehicle.
So one person was able to drive? And shoot that many bullets into that many cars?
Amazing. Yes.
That's, that's surprising, okay, thank you.
Yes, it was, um, it was a really hairy scene and, um, very difficult to navigate for everyone that was involved with it. He shot out the side of the windows, he shot through the back window of the van that he was driving. He stopped, got out and shot more. It was a, it was a pretty chaotic scene. Moving on to correction statistics. We're keeping in line with what we've had in the last couple of years. Booking's at forty-two hundred and you can see the meals served, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Detoxing inmates, that's people who actually come into the jail that are under the influence. And then mental health visits, mental health has gone very well for us recently. We had some difficulties a couple of years ago, as you may remember, but it's going really well for us right now. Lot of inmates fights, staff on assaults is troubling to me, that's up. Last year we had fourteen, this year we have sixteen. And then you see suicidal ideation, that's something that the inmates tell us about through our mental health visits and we have to put them on suicide watch. Suicide attempts, four, and we did have actual, actually one successful suicide, unfortunately. Next slide, please. And what you don't see through all of that is multiple inmates were saved using Narcan. Again, this just emphasizes, reemphasizes how many assaults were on staff. And you can see a, a couple of different instances where we saved someone having a heart attack in the jail and it's really important, you guys have seen inside that booking area and how chaotic it is and they recognizing people inside of a cell having a heart attack and then going in and being able to help them is really quite remarkable. Next slide. Currently, we have four school resource deputies and it's important to understand our partnerships here. So Western and Vandercook Lake are full-time deputies. Hanover Horton, we have, if you recall, we have kind of a unique agreement with them where the village, the township and the schools all participate in having a school resource deputy, so he's there every day. He just doesn't stay in the school all day. He stays in their area, he goes into the school if they need him and it's worked out really well, they're, they're very happy with him. And Northwest is a casual deputy. My explorer program continues to be very successful. They go to the academy, they have an explorer academy that's a week long. I have an explorer right now that's in the actual police academy and she told me, I just spoke with her this last weekend at an awards banquet and she told me, excuse me, the weekend prior, and she told me that the explorer academy was harder than the police academy and I got a kick out of that. Court security, we talked about that already, our marine patrol, our dive team, two new members on our dive team, all volunteer and I think it's really important to, to recognize how well we do there. Next slide, please. And? Here we go. And worth mentioning, here are the seven deputies that we hired last year. So everybody, if you, if you look at the bottom three, which would be on your far right, that is Tom Brower. He is a retired black men township department of public safety officer and we were really excited to get Tom. He was able to come in, he's the only one of the seven that we didn't put through the police academy. Tom retired, came in for us and is now working in Grass Lake Township. Next slide, please. And worth mentioning, obviously, a second time is Deputy Davis, who passed away in May twenty-fifth of this year, a car accident. And you can see that he received several awards last year for heroism and bravery on duty. Next slide. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioner Duckham.
How is your staffing level now?
Right now, so it's important to understand our staffing and what I'm going to do, I spoke with Mr. Overton about this on Friday, in fact. What I'm going to do in the future is make sure that you understand who we have and where we have them. So I'm sorry to make this a long answer to your question, but we have, we have all of our contracted deputy positions filled and typically have that always full. There might be a little bit of lag time if somebody retires, but typically all of our contracts are full. We have nineteen contracted positions, we had twenty, but Norville Township elected to go on their own and do their, have their own police department, so all nineteen of those positions are full. Now, on the other side, we have sixteen positions and that's our general patrol services, which is funded through the general fund. So in those positions, right now, we have all sixteen positions filled. However, five of those positions are not counted, if you will. So, and the reason for that is three of them are, are in training, they are currently in their second phase of field training. I anticipate, unless there's any problems, I anticipate them all coming off and roughly in May. And then we have two that are in the police academy. So the two that are in the police academy, they won't graduate until May and then they have to go through field training and I don't anticipate being able to count them until October of this year. So when you look at what we have, the, the four positions that we lost, that came from that pool of, of what would have been twenty, right? So that pool of twenty, we lost four, so that, that equates to about twenty percent of our, our force. And that's why it's important to understand how all these moving parts work. The contracted positions, we don't rely on for patrol services. When we were using, excuse me, when we used the, the money from those positions to, that, that weren't filled? To back up our patrol services, all the deputies are able to put in for that, so all the contracted service deputies and all that are able to put in for that overtime and, and help our, our general patrol services. But now we don't have that. So effectively, from last year at this point, we are down nine positions. But reality is, we have thirty-five, all thirty-five of our positions filled, just five of them aren't counted and of course, we have a couple of people off on injury right now too, which complicates things a little bit, but we're able to navigate that pretty well. But all thirty-five of, on our patrol side are filled. On our correction side, we have five open positions right now. I take that back, we have a new one starting today that I forgot about, so we have four open positions right now and we have three of them that have completed their background checks, that are awaiting their psychological review and one that I just interviewed on Friday and offered a position to, but she will not be able to take it until May. And then we have two additional positions that we know are going to be vacant in July that we're preparing for as well and I have interviews scheduled for them too. So we're really close to, to having corrections completely full as well.
How's that affect the patrol, in the overnight patrol?
I'm sorry, I can, I can understand.
I mean, how, how is? Your program that you have in place now, how does that affect our overnight patrol? Are we good there?
So, yes, we have overnight patrol, yes. So the way that it affects it is before we had five people on each shift to do out county patrol. So if we had twenty deputies, we have four different shifts, we have an A and a B on, on each day, so it's staggered. And we'd have five on and our minimum manning was three deputies at night. So when we were low, when we were ten deputies down, which is basically half our, our out county road patrol force, when we were low like that, we would fill those positions when we were low like that, we would fill those positions with, uh, the, the contract, or excuse me, the contracted deputies by, uh, by putting them on overtime to fill it. And, um, we would just go to that minimum manning mark of having, making sure that we had three on each shift. Now, uh, it's a little bit more complicated because we don't have that. So, what we do now is we, we double up at night when we have low, uh, shift on at night. I have low shifts on at night. So, um, try to explain it so, uh, it makes sense. Because I have it in my head, but I'm not sure I can give it to you. So, the way we do it right now is, if we have a, a low shift, like we have a couple of injuries, for instance, um, and that's, those are on, uh, different shifts. So, what we will do is, we will have, uh, a car have two people in it, uh, starting at eleven o'clock, and that's by contract. So, they have that right in their contract, the labor agreement. So, at eleven o'clock, we have two people go into one car, and that's our patrol sector for the entire shift. What we've done is, we mapped out how many times that's going to occur, uh, within the next three months period. Now, taking out things that, you know, like somebody being sick or whatever, you know, that kind of stuff, we know that that's going to happen twenty-one times between now and May. Actually, um, it's already happened twice, so we're down to nineteen times. So, we know it's gonna happen nineteen more times. And what we did is, we talked with, uh, the Michigan State Police, and we explained to them, uh, uh, our reduction in, in manpower and that we need additional help, uh, providing services to Jackson County. And they have provided us with additional state troopers. And I understand that they've, they've requested overtime, um, throughout our entire region so to make sure that they have police officers, uh, on hand to handle calls. So, we do have, uh, adequate night, nighttime protection and patrol, um, and we're able to handle that pretty well. We also have Summit Township that's out there, uh, which is really important because we can never leave that person by themselves. Summit Township has, uh, it's a busy township, has a lot of things going on. We want to make sure that they have adequate backup. So, this should take care of that. The only challenge has been...
Okay.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
In their contracts, you said in their contracts, there has to be two people in a car at night?
A, a labor agreement. Yes. When we get, when we get to eleven o'clock at night, our labor agreement requires us to have two people in one car.
You'd be the only department in Nicole County that has two in a car at night, wouldn't you?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
You'd be, I mean, Columbia only has one, Norville has one, Napoleon has one, I think Blackman has one. I don't know what the state police are on.
So, though, they work during the day? So, so like, uh, Napoleon Township, I believe that they, they stop working at right around one in the morning, something like that.
I heard four, but, yeah.
I think it varies. It goes back and forth. Um, so, Spring Arbor Township doesn't work at night, uh, Springport doesn't work at night. Uh, the contracted townships that we have, the only one that's, excuse me, that provides twenty-four-hour service is Summit. And then, uh, Grass Lake Township provides a twelve-hour shift, shift seven days a week, but it's, most of it is during the day, so none of it is overnight. Uh, and we try to accommodate what the contract, uh, contracted people want because they, they typically know what is going on in their area and what they need in their area. So, we rely upon them. Uh, we give them some guidance, and, and from time to time, we do have them work, uh, an overlapping night shift or maybe into the night, but very rarely do they work overnight shifts.
Would it make sense to, excuse me, to have more people on at night when the townships all have people on in the daytime? Kind of balance it out?
Well, here's the issue, um, and it's a big issue. We also are responsible for court and court security, and we also have to transport, uh, inmates to and from different areas. And the problem with that is that, like, for instance, we had, um, the circumstances here just a couple of weeks ago, we had a couple of homicide investiga, or excuse me, uh, not investigations, but, uh, court trials. And you have a large courtroom presence by both the victim's family and the suspect's family inside, uh, the, the courts. So, we are able to, uh, address the needs of the court, uh, with our, our patrol staff. The thing that, that is probably the most pressing are the medical emergencies that happen. And most of them happen during the day, thankfully, knocking on wood. Um, and when those occur, we don't have adequate staffing inside the jail to have them leave and, and take somebody to the hospital. So, an ambulance comes and takes somebody to the hospital, we have to have deputy with them. They have to be under guard. And that's what our patrol does for us. So, there's a lot of different things that patrol does, other than just answering criminal complaints and, and, and other stuff. Um, so, whereas it would seem like that would be a good thing to do, we can't pull people from the townships to do that as well. Now, there are, there are provisions in the contracts that allow us to do that from time to time. Um, and we do quite often pull them for a call here, or a call there, for a backup, or whatever the case may be. But, um, I think taking them and putting them in the hospital for a couple, two or three hours, uh, is going to, to wear thin very quickly.
Now, I, I know in Hillsdale County, they have a large state police presence.
They do.
Why don't we?
So, um, it'd be a better question for the state police, but I'll try to answer it the best, what, best that I can. So, the state police reorganized themselves a few years ago, and instead of just having the Jackson Post, they now have the Jackson slash Hillsdale Post. So, the Jackson Post handles all of Hillsdale County as well, and, uh, Hillsdale County, they don't, I, I think, uh, Sheriff Hodshire was going to try to get one night shift on, um, at least a car or two on Hillsdale County. I'm not sure that he was able to accomplish that, uh, but for a long time, they haven't had any night patrols. And, and so, they had no police presence whatsoever. So, the state police picked up that and, uh, were handling patrols in Hillsdale County.
Why can't they do that for Jackson County?
I don't think they have the manpower to do that. One of the things that state police has found, uh, here recently is, it's a lot, it's hard to hire police officers, just like we found.
We know that.
And so, I know they're down, uh, and their ranks as well. And just covering the stuff that we have here in Jackson County, one of the things that they have to do, um, which are mandated by law to do, is handle all primary roads. So, Jackson has more primary roads than Hillsdale County, like, uh, US one-twenty-seven, uh, I ninety-four, M sixty, M fifty, those kind of things. They handle all those things and the accidents that go along with it. Um, that's their primary responsibility. So, those are the things that they handle, uh, here in Jackson County. And, um, plus, they do a lot of investigations of different criminal, uh, stuff that goes on, uh, through the prison systems and different things like that as well. So, they're pretty busy, um, and I think asking for them to do more is certainly what we have already done, and they stepped up to it, but, um...
Yeah, but they're handling most road patrol in Hillsdale County. They should handle some of ours. We pay as many, much taxes, more taxes per capita in Hillsdale County.
Well, it's a good question to ask them, um, because I, I can't answer it. But, uh, but I, but I will tell you, they handle a lot of stuff in Jackson County as well.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bear.
Thank you. Question on the chain net. When they make arrests and confiscate the drugs, they also take cash. So, you listed the amount of cash that was seized. What happens to that cash?
It goes back, by law, it goes back into, uh, fighting drugs, fighting drug crimes. So, it goes right back into their system, and they use that for training. They use that to purchase equipment. They use that for different things like, that goes along with it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other committee member questions? I have one. We kind of discussed it during, uh, the tough talks when we were, you know, hashing out the budget. Have you actively approached any of those townships, like Rives, that comes to mind, to see if they're interested in contracting? And beyond that, because we're talking about night patrol, if we could specifically tailor the contract to where they'd be hiring at least a second shift deputy, you know, when crime occurs, because in the daytime, it sounds like we're covered. There's the other townships with, with officers, and, and obviously, the majority of your road patrol is daytime, right? How many, how many are you, is it four officers at night or three?
It's equally split.
It's what?
It's equally split. Our patrols are equally split.
So, I'm at, so, two questions. Sorry to ramble on, but one, are we actively asking the townships that don't have contracts if they have any financial means to do so, and are you looking at potentially making those evening shifts?
So, yes. So, I've, I've already reached out to Rives. I haven't received a response yet. Um, and I reached out to Liberty Township. Uh, those were the two that appeared to be, um, most interested in it. Um, I had some talks with Plaski early on during the Hanover discussion, um, and they went back and forth as to whether or not they wanted it. And the only thing they were able to afford was one day, uh, which is very difficult for us to accommodate. Obviously, I would prefer to have contracts that are, you know, for a full deputy, uh, full-time. So, that's, that's kind of the challenge with a lot of these outlying townships, is they want it for one day, they want it for two days, or whatever the case may be, and they want it so people can see them and are visual, and they're handling ordinance complaints as well inside of their township. And it's really difficult for all that to ha, to happen at night. But our primary, uh, calls for service, I, I picked a twelve-hour, uh, focus, and that's from ten AM to ten PM. So, our new plan, when we have, if we ever have, when we have, I should say, all thirty-five people on board, we will have, uh, a deputy assigned for ten AM to ten PM. So, there'll be, uh, of course, the, the shifts that we have right now, which is six A to six P, six P to six A, but in addition, we'll have a deputy that does that overlap of ten A to ten P. That's when our, the majority of our calls for service come in. I think we averaged somewhere in the neighborhood of, um, two calls for service after midnight until six AM. So, it was pretty low. Uh, and that's why we're like, well, if we can make cuts, that's probably the area we want to make cuts. Doesn't make you feel warm and fuzzy when you're sitting in your bed at night, um, and I understand that. And I believe we do need to have presence out there, uh, in the middle of the night because oftentimes, that's when, when crimes occur, and we need people on patrol. Actually crafting that into the contract, I think, would be difficult. Because I'm not sure people would agree to that. If we can get them to, to, to do a twenty-four-hour contract, I don't think anybody, but Summit has the, has the means to do that, um, that would be ideal. But actually getting them to do it, uh, on, you know, where we dictate how they, how, you know, how we, uh, uh, call the shots and when, when the person comes on, uh, might be kind of difficult. We do have some latitude there, where, uh, we have them come in at different times. And of course, the deputies, uh, are pretty in tune with their townships. They're, they're really well-liked in their townships, and they service them real well. So, from time to time, they will work a night shift, um, an afternoon shift. A lot of them work a little bit later into the afternoon, uh, like six o'clock, seven o'clock, from time to time as well. So, it, it does help with, with, uh, those kind of calls.
Okay. Well, if you do have any progress and if one actually contracts with us, I guess we'd see it in front of us, but keep us posted.
Yep, I absolutely will.
All right.
Yes, sir. And let me know if you, if you hear of anybody who wants to. I, I make it around to all the townships, and I talk...
Sounded like Rives wanted to. I've had people from their community, I know it's Commissioner Bear's district, but there's a few people that reach out to me for whatever reason anyways, that have said...
I'm not sure why I haven't heard back from them.
Okay.
I'm, I'm happy to entertain it. Absolutely.
You've sent a letter, like a formal letter to the...
I, I sent an email.
Okay.
I did. Yes.
Just wondered. All right.
I, I, I had casual conversations as well, but, uh, it doesn't seem to be. Yep.
Any other committee member questions? If not, I'd be looking for a motion to receive the report.
So moved.
Moved by Duckham, supported by Bear. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, pass unanimously. Thank you, Sheriff. Have a good day.
Thank you. You, too.
And my thing's froze up. I'm sorry, it froze up. Go ahead, Juan. Yep.
Good morning. Good morning. Uh, I'm requesting a easement for Consumer Synergy so they can install the electric and gas service on the east side of the airport.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I'd be looking for, oh, hold on one second here. Be looking for a motion to send to the full board with recommendation of approval.
So, move...
Moved by Bear, supported by Duckham. Any questions, comments? Seeing none of you, post a vote, please.
It's been posted. Pass is unanimous.
Thank you, Juan.
Thank you, Commissioner Cutter.
Great day. Takes us to item F nine-one-one Quarterly Report, and Jason Hammond is here. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, guys. Touch some, some big key points on the first page. We're having a version upgrade on our MPSCS Astro radios, which is our backup radios, uh, later this year. Motorola is actually gonna be paying for the upgrade. Our Brown, Brown Road Radio Tower, we had some significant, uh, damage done to that, uh, due to some rodents. That has been fixed and repaired. And the big one was the CAD to CAD interface with HVA that has been installed. Uh, we are working that, uh, back and forth. Our next meeting is the thirteenth, uh, to hash out some mapping of, uh, call types and their call types, to make sure we're getting the information, and they are getting the information as well. So, I'll keep you guys up to date on that one. And then we have the large tabletop exercise at American One, uh, for HB Fuller site, out in Michigan Center. And then just some...
What was that, out in Michigan Center? I'm sorry.
HB Fuller, uh, this, uh, manufacturing shop right across the railroad tracks. We had a tabletop exercise, uh, de, uh, train derailment, uh, went real well at the American One Event Center. And then the next page is the call breakdown, um, for, 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 uh, last year. Cell calls were VOP phone calls as well, and then we also have our texting. SMS texting to our phone system was twelve-hundred-sixty-two, and then texting to our Prepared Live, which was thirteen-hundred-and-forty. So, about twenty, about twenty-five-hundred texts last, last year. They keep going up. I think the previous year was twelve-hundred, so... Uh, the next page is our call, uh, call count for year-to-date. We're still having some, uh, issues with, with our analytics, which Motorola and AT&amp;T are still working on, trying to get that resolved, but I was able to get, uh, some numbers for last year. And then the average talk time for a dispatcher is eighty-four seconds. I think it's just up, uh, one, one second from last year. Next page is the calls per time of day, so, uh, when the sheriff's talking about ten to ten, that is the busiest times, uh, for law enforcement and, as well as, uh, fire departments as well for 2024. Next page is the fourteen calls that I just randomly picked for 2024. Some increased, some decreased. And the next page is the call count for twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five right now, for, for calls of service. Any questions on that? And then some future updates that will be needed. The last, uh, state, um, conference I went to, uh, our radio consoles, which we purchased back in two thousand and seventeen, will have to be updated, and the life is twenty-thirty. Um, so, you're looking at, uh, five years down the road, but just give guys a heads up. Upgrade to the new version of Astro radios. That's this year. Uh, that's the one that Motorola is paying for us. We continue to look at AI for taking some of the non-emergency phone calls, things of that nature. Trying to take some of the workload off. And then the update to CAD, mobile LARMs, records, corrections... Um, trying to take some of the workload off. And then the update to CAD, mobile LMS records, corrections, looking at the cloud as well for that. Um, myself and, uh, IT Director Ben Muscat's been looking into stuff, so. And then one of the things that's not on here, I'll just kind of let you guys know, Pyramid, uh, is a company that actually built our radio towers, um, back in 2016, 2017. They're in the business now of also advertising our radio towers for us. Um, I did send the contract off to our attorneys. It went, went back to, um, Pyramid. And then once all that gets worked out, I'll hopefully bring that back to you guys, but they will advertise, um, our radio towers to get some, uh, customers on, sell companies, cable companies onto our towers to earn a little extra revenue as well, so.
Committee members, any questions? Commissioner Duckham.
Just a comment. I congratulate you. You guys are doing a really fine job, in my opinion. We don't have all the address hiccups and we had before. Since we put it in, under your control, it seems to be working really fine.
Appreciate it.
So your people, thank you, and thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you. I'll let them know.
Any other questions, comments? If none, I'd be looking for a motion to receive the report.
So moved.
Moved by Bear, supported by Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Have a good day. Thank you, sir. Takes us to item G, Public Defender Quarterly Report. Mr. Fortino is here.
Quarterly report, I'm sure you're familiar with. Hasn't changed much, uh, since I started doing this, but the no, the only things that really change are the numbers. Oh, sure. Is that better? I also want to talk about, uh, standard six. Um, MIDC standard six was, which is based on statute. Uh, it has been adopted and that has certain requirements in it. I've talked about it a little bit before, but I thought I'd go a little bit more into depth. If we could go to, uh, slide number three. There are. Thank you. It's designed to make sure that, uh, indigent defendants get adequate representation, and that means that, uh, adequate time is spent on each of their cases. And that requires that there are limits on the number of cases our attorneys can take, uh, and have. Right now, uh, standard six requires that felony attorneys are not to handle more than 150, uh, cases a year. Misdemeanor attorneys are not, uh, supposed to handle more than 400 cases per year. And if you're both, doing both felonies and misdemeanors, it's, it's done proportionately. Um, we're not meeting that standard yet. The standard has passed, but MIDC has given, uh, all of the, the public defender's offices a grace period because there is a shortage of attorneys. Uh, a lot of attorneys moving around. I've lost two or three attorneys to Wayne County. I've lost attorneys to Oakland County. I've lost attorneys to Washtenaw County. But right now, we're in a fairly good shape. We've got two vacancies. Um, you're, you're, you may be familiar with the way our office is set up. We have an APD one position, which are, um, law school graduates who are waiting to take the bar or waiting for results from the bar. We have four of those. Those positions are all filled. We have APD, two positions, which are misdemeanor, uh, attorneys. They work, uh, in just the misdemeanor courts. Then we have threes who do low severity felonies and fours who do, uh, high severity felonies. And that's why we're working right now. We've got our APD four, that's high severity. That's full. We've got our, all the attorneys we need for that. Still not meeting the standards, but we're, as long as we are working on a plan, MIDC will give us a grace. I think they're going to wait until April of 25, April of 25 and then look into it. And if they see that we are working on this and trying to meet these standards, then we're going to be okay. And the, yeah, the standards are, are important because, um, compensation or funds depend on us being in, in full compliance. So, right now, I, we have, uh, besides myself and my chief assistant, uh, 15 others, 15 attorneys. We are going to implement this summer a, sort of an internship program. Uh, we've discussed that with administration and that's been approved. Uh, we're going to do it during the summer because most law schools anymore, uh, they have the summers off. When I went to law school, we, we went year-round. But, uh, there are plenty of law schools that, uh, that go in semesters. Do you, does anybody have any questions about the standard six?
Commissioner Duckham.
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, how many of your people work from home?
No one.
You don't?
No.
Okay.
I mean, they're, they're, they do have, they do work remote on occasion. Like they have a sick child or bad weather and they can't get out of their driveway, things like that, but they always have their computers with them. And we know that they're working because we can see what they're doing.
Okay.
So if they are remote, then we know what, we know whether they're working or not.
Are they as efficient when they work from home as when they work from the office?
Yes. Uh, attorneys, if they have court, they don't work from home.
Uh-huh.
Um, uh, mostly it's the staff because we have, most of our staff have children. Um, children get sick, you know, and, and things like that happen. So we, uh, encourage them to take their, uh, computers home with them just in case something happens, but nobody works from home full-time. No.
Okay. Is there information that, that they need that has to be drawn from your system that they couldn't draw from home?
No, we have, they have full access to our system.
Okay.
And that's another point. Uh, right now, as I've, uh, discussed before, we've got the, a case management system, which is a system you're talking about. Um, it's called Defender Data. We're currently moving into a new system. It's more, uh, user-friendly. Uh, it has more functions, more components to it that, uh, will be useful for us. Um, and it's the same thing. We monitor, we, we monitor that as well. We know what cases are being entered, how quickly that they're being entered, because that's also a standard. They have to be entered in a certain amount of time. So we make sure that that's happening as well, so.
Okay. And when it comes to court, are you get, getting to all your designated times and dates to serve your clients?
We try. It's, it's, uh, it's a, it's kind of strange. Uh, I've, I've worked in several counties, but, um, the, the judges in this county seem to schedule the same types of hearings at the same time on the same days. So if one of my attorneys has a case in, say Judge Wilson's courtroom and has a case in Judge McBane's courtroom and they're scheduled at the same time, there is a conflict because you can't be in both places. Now, the court rule says that the judges are just supposed to work that out between themselves as to who is going to get this person first. Uh, normally it works okay, okay, because there's enough work that they can move on to the next case until this person's done in this court and then goes directly to Judge Wilson's court, so.
And how about the prosecutor's office? I mean, are they there when they're supposed to be?
As far as I know, uh, they don't, they don't go to arraignments unless it's a, a, a heinous crime, um, a murder, something like that. Then they'll show up at the arraignment. Uh, CSCs, they'll show up at arraignment, but generally they, they don't show up at arraignment. Uh, every other hearing, I think they've got covered. I understand that they're short a few attorneys now. Um, but I haven't really had any problems with it. Uh, they seem to be there when they, when they have to be. Normally at the arraignment, uh, we just give the judge information about our client. The, the judge will read the complaint and tell him what the maximum possible penalty is. Ask them if they want to plead guilty, not guilty, or stand mute. Then bond is usually discussed, but by then the judge is usually kind of made up their, their mind, or the magistrate is kind of made up their mind about the, uh, bond. But we do argue bond. We, we try to get a reasonable bond. You know, not everybody ought to get out, but the bond ought to be reasonable because what the bond is, is, is for is to make sure that the person will show up again and that that person doesn't pose a danger to the community. So that, that, those are the types of arguments we make there.
Thank you.
Mr. Overton.
Brian, just to be clear, the expectation is that your employees come to work and they do, and it's the exception when they stay home and work?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And I, I discussed case management system, which I believe is the next slide. Um, and then, uh, I've got a slide on how many felonies are opened. Um, I also want to mention that we do have quite a complement of, um, uh, contractor attorneys. They're, uh, independent contractors. They all have their own, uh, they have to prove to us that they have their own professional liability insurance. Um, and that is helping us meet the standards. Uh, because I think we have 15 that we can call, that we, we can call. Some will take two a week, some will take one a week, some will take four a week. It just depends on with, how busy they are. So that, that's been a big help as well, so. Um, but we are looking to, uh, fill the, the positions that we have in the future. Uh, we may be back asking to, um, add a couple more attorneys so we don't have to rely on the contract attorneys. We can meet these standards on our own, in our own office. Um, we may need another, we're just starting to look at this because we're, we're starting our budget process for next year right now. Uh, but we're looking at it. We may need, uh, an additional staff person and maybe some changes inside the office, but uh, we haven't got that, any plans fully worked out on that yet. We're just, we're just looking at it because, uh, I think we've got all the reports we need from the county and we've got all our reports generated. So we, we start working on the budget this, you know, February, March, as soon as we can get it done. So, any questions?
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So you mentioned, um, having several attorneys, um, to leave for a variety of reasons. Um, but I'm curious, have you, have you conducted any exit interviews on any of the employees so we can kind of figure out what some of those reasons are for the, what those drivers are, why people are leaving, if we can address those by any chance?
I, I, they usually, when they come in and they tell me that they want to leave, they tell me why. And, and, um, it's, it's actually been, they've got a better offer from a different county.
Okay. I figured as much, but I just was curious. Thank you. Nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Kibetzky.
If I can just supplement that answer. Um, yes, uh, HR does an exit interview with those employees. They reach out to every employee that resigns or separates employment for whatever reason. Um, and so HR does have that information. But a majority, from what we've seen in the public defender's office, a majority of the people are leaving as he indicated to Wayne County, Oakland, and Washtenaw County, which are significantly higher pay. So they're leaving for 30, 40, 50% pay increases generally.
Yeah, I had, um, one attorney, who was a very good attorney. I hated to lose him, but, um, Oakland County offered him $40,000 more than we could pay him. So I, I, I can't ask him, can't keep him there, so.
Nice to have their pockets. All right. Is, there's no other questions? Be looking for a motion to receive the report. Moved by Wall, supported by Bear. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passed unanimously. Have a good day, Mr. Fortino. Thank you. Uh, takes us to Jackson County Department of Transportation and the dust control. Morning, Angie.
Good morning. All right. This is just our normal dust control bid. Um, it's the same vendor that gave the low bid and we've been happy with their service. So we're asking for the board to approve our dust control services to Corrigan Environmental for one year with a possible extension of one year.
Committee members, any questions? Okay, moved by Williams.
Support.
Supported by Duckham. Any discussion? If not, if you could please post a vote.
It's been posted. Passes unanimously.
Thank you. Takes us to item I, sweep, street sweeping.
So this is our street sweeping contract. Uh, this is not just the normal sweeper that we have. This is for construction projects, typically um, a vacuum type. So we put out a bid and Sweeping Corporate of America provided the lowest bid and we're asking for approval, uh, for up to 150,000 for one year with a possible extension.
Any question, committee members? If none, be looking for a motion to forward to the full board with recommendation of approval.
So moved.
Moved by Bear.
Support.
Supported by Williams. Any discussion? Seeing none, please post a vote.
It's been posted. Passes unanimously.
Thank you. That takes us to item J, concrete work.
This is our as-needed concrete work for our projects. Uh, we put it out to bid and five contractors responded. We're recommending a ward to Mata Brothers who had it, not last one, but the one before that and multiple before that. Uh, they're local and we're happy with their work. So we're asking for a not to exceed 150,000 for one year with a possible extension of one.
Committee members, any questions? If not, be looking for a motion to forward to the full board.
Support.
Moved by Bear, supported by Duckham. Any discussion? Seeing none, if you'd please post that vote.
It's been posted.
Duckham ZS.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you. Takes us to item K, HMA surfacing 2025.
This is our HMA surfacing bid, so our paving bid for our township and county work as needed. Um, we have the Blackman Charter Town, Charter Township and Columbia Charter Township projects that have the uh, special, special assessment, assessment districts. Wow, tongue twisters this morning. Um, about 14 miles of paving in those. And then this is written, uh, so that we can add any projects that come in with other townships to it uh, and they'll honor the prices. So we're asking for the board to approve the contract to, uh, Michigan Paving for just under 3 million.
Committee members, any questions? If not, be looking for a motion to forward to the full board.
Some of.
Moved by Duckham. Supported by Williams. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Takes us to item L, bridge inspections.
This is a bid for our bridge inspections. Um, we have bi-annual bridge inspections. Some are 12 months, some are six months, but typically it's bi-annual bridge inspections for 64 bridges in the county that have to be performed. Um, and they are typically under the authority, so we've never brought them to the board, but prices have gone up. So we have a two-year bid for a bridge inspection. It is the same, um, engineering firm that's been doing them that was low bid. If you look at the staff report, you'll see that the up to amount is the 64,000. That is, if you look in the RFP from Great Lakes, that's covering the bridge inspections plus any as-needed services we need throughout the two years. Because as you do bridge inspections, there might be deteriorations and then you have to do a load rating for it. So we're asking up to, but if we don't have to spend any more than the 27.9, then we won't.
Commissioner Bear.
Are these inspection services things that you cannot do in-house?
Correct.
Thank you.
Committee members, any other questions? If not, be looking for a motion to forward to the full board.
So moved.
Moved, moved by Duckham and supported by Bear. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. And that takes us to the February TCOs. What does that acronym stand for?
Traffic Control Orders.
Okay. Okay.
So this is a cleanup item and some new ones, but Charlie was working with schools to get school zones set up, and we realized that we had a few out there that hadn't come before the board, or at least one stop sign. So that's why it says February, because you'll probably see some more coming throughout the year as we find ones that haven't been approved over the years. Because if you don't have a traffic control order on file with the clerk, then they'll drop the ticket if someone fights it. So we're trying to clean that up. But right now, we have the Western School District, Sharp Park Academy, and Dibble Elementary School that requested school zones, and we're installing those for them. And then two stop-controlled intersections, the Deering and King, which has been there since MDOT did their detour, and then Mount Hope and Seymour, that we'll be putting out there as a result from that fatal that happened last year.
Committee members, any questions? Seeing none, be looking for a motion to forward to the full board.
So move.
Moved by Duckham, supported by Walls. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously, and takes us to your last item, the monthly report.
All right, so our monthly report, the grant projects are just slowly moving along. We have our signal modernization project that they're working on, getting, coordinating with consumers for the power. Our tree removal safety projects are ongoing. We've been working with various property owners regarding trees coming out of their yard. I think that's been going pretty good. We have had some lengthy conversations with residents explaining it, but they're being removed. Our curb signage project is ongoing. We've got 50 curves completed out of the 124. And then maintenance, winter maintenance. This winter has been a little bit harsher than last winter. So we, we're up to 11 events. We count our events as multiple days will be one event if it's the same storm. So you can see that spreadsheet that shows the multiple days. I think Event Two had four days in a row. But 11 events, and we are just under 9,000 tons of salt on the county system and 23,000 gallons of chloride on our county system. And then we have our Q Alert summary for 2025. We have a total of 237 Q Alerts already in the system for January that we have closed out, 169 of them. So I believe our crews are doing a good job staying on top of those. Then our patching information. We've done 191 tons of patch in January. And if you look at the table that I've been, that I started in 2022, you can see that that's pretty consistent for January. We've got 200, 191, and 191, so on task with our January patching. And then I, any questions?
Commissioner Bear has a question.
Thank you. Angie, on the tree removal safety project.
Yep.
The photo that you've included here, it looks like where the staff are cutting off what amounts to a six, seven-foot-high stump. It looks like there's going to be enough of a stump left there that a car could still run into that stump and sustain as much damage if the tree had still been there. How low do these stumps get cut off, or do you send in a stump grinder and grind them down flush?
We do. That's just a progress picture. They're currently working on that tree. There will not be a stump there once they're done.
You grind them down and, thank you.
Okay, any other committee member questions, comments? If not, be looking for a motion to receive the report. Moved by Bear, supported by Duckham. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you. Have a great day. Takes us to item 5A, need a motion to pay the claims.
Support.
So, motion by Duckham. Supported by Bear. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Takes us to other minutes, of which we do not have any. Item C is the reporting schedule for next month, which will be the Jackson County Department of Transportation Monthly, the youth center, friend of the court, airport, animal shelter, and emergency management. Takes us to item 6A, second opportunity for public comment. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? These two gentlemen are not brave today. You sure? Last chance, no public comment. Public comment is closed. Takes us to item 7, committee member comments. Are there any committee member comments? It's a miracle. Meeting adjourned.